My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Upcoming meeting dates are July 16th, 2024, and August 20th, 2024. We'll do a roll call starting with John Greenan.
John Greenan.
John Paterson.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Miyoshi.
Sarah Leto.
Okay, we have minutes for the May 21st, 2024, meeting. I have not had a chance to review those, so I'd like to hold those over until the following meeting. The first item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for JFE associates. Could I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
So last we were here last month, we had kind of gotten down to three items that the board was looking for relative to the proposal. One was we needed to, they want some assurance that the current owner was okay with the applicant moving forward as they are, so we applied at an owner's consent. That should be on record now with the town. Number two was there was some discussion regarding some drainage. If you're familiar, as you drive into the property, there's kind of a 90 degree turn and then you come into the site. At that low spot there, there's some water really comes off the fire department property and kind of sits there. So what we propose on here, there is a low spot further back toward the site, 100 feet or so. We show some regrading in order to pick up that drainage and work its way to the back. And number three was detailing the ability to show where each of the parking spaces were or are on that area that's really overgrown. So the fellas went back there and actually cleared out a bunch of it. I don't know if anybody's been there. In fact, some of the old railroad ties which were proposed to delineate between the parking rows and so forth actually were found. So those are there, but I also did show recyclable bumper blocks to be shown where they're needed to define the parking spaces so people know that there are parking spots there and they don't have to park out on, not that we anticipate that, but park out on the access road. So that's, those were the three items I think that we were looking to resolve, the board was looking to resolve.
So, Michael, you'll have bumper blocks for all 95 spaces that you've...
For the ones that are not, the ones that you can't tell where the spaces are, that's where we're proposing those, which are the ones that were overgrown on the backside.
So not all of them?
Right.
So have we determined the exact amount of parking they need against what they currently have?
So the existing approved site plan has 83 spaces. He's proposing 95. I'm not sure where the extra space is coming from. I don't know if it's a reconfiguration, but right now it's a free-for-all out there, right? And I was out there before they had actually cleared up the back area, so you know, you can definitely fit additional spaces in there, but again, if you don't have them demarcated, it's sort of hard to know exactly where it is and how many you would be able to fit in. And I, we've been receiving complaints into the planning office about the lack of parking during certain times. It's not all the time, it's during certain times, I think particularly on the weekend. So Mike, I guess my question for you is, one of my questions for you is, how many additional spaces do you think you got with the back row? And how many were there to begin with? See, it's almost impossible to know because they're not demarcated properly.
And you're also relying on whoever parks first, everybody else is just going to follow.
Correct.
So that random person who's in a hurry parks awkwardly or something.
There's no demarcation.
They all follow.
Yeah. Yeah, they could park willy-nilly, sideways, whatever.
Well, in that front parking spot, most people park, there are existing islands that have rural ties around them, so it's not perfect, but there's somewhere to start with configuration in terms of how to park. One of the things that they did when we were out there, actually the existing railroad ties, they actually painted, just so there was something visually there so people could see.
But just along the back or everywhere?
It was just along the back. Now, one of the things too is, again, these guys have a two-year lease with them without doing all the work for the owner. I mean, I think there would be no problem, maybe every year delineating each of the spaces in paint, because we know that's not going to last, but at least it would cover, you know, making sure that people knew where those parking spots were and, you know, create, you know, get away from the mass confusion issue of what happens. But, and again, remember, in the winter, in the winter, we're not going to need that space out there, so that kind of becomes an issue.
So I guess from my understanding of the situation out there is that particularly on the weekends, there's existing, there's multiple uses on the site, and the existing uses on the site during the weekends, some of the people that are going to use the golf area, for example, can't park because there's too many cars there and they can't actually come in, or they're circling around, or they're parking on the driveway. So now they've just cleared an area to give some additional spaces, but it is still unclear if those additional spaces that they're providing is enough parking to deal with what is going on out there or not, particularly during this peak period.
Do we know by square footage possibly that there's enough spaces or how many spaces if they were, if they were clearly marked?
Assuming Mike has surveyed the area and has the exact...
Properly.
...space base area done properly, there's 95 spaces supposedly that can fit in there if they're marked and striped properly. There are 83 on the approved site plan, and again, that was sort of a gravel site plan, but there were 83 shown, so I'm not sure how we got the additional spaces, additional 12 spaces smushed in there to begin with.
And there's no ability beyond that then? Like, right now, when you've gone through that cleared space, you've opened everything up, that's the maximum amount of area you'll have to park now?
You could probably clear more space behind those trees. We just didn't, we, when we left there last time, we said we were going to do some work there, but we didn't want to like knock trees down.
Understand.
I didn't know how far we can to...
Yeah.
I started knocking down trees and I still don't even know if the owner's going to be mad at me for doing that part.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's a good point. I mean, there's room for extra parking, but if you're taking down some of the big trees that's in there.
So, I mean, I think what part, there was mission creep, right? There was an existing use there and then things have gotten approved or their different kind of uses have changed out, or they're doing different things in the dome maybe than they were previously. So I think part of what happened is that the parking hasn't been looked at in a while.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, we don't want to create a situation where there isn't adequate parking for the existing uses, but I think that we need to be, we need to be sure that you guys can park what you need to park and that the existing uses can park what they want.
Right, and I understand, and just, just again, not to, not to belay or any kind of an issue, but there is a little bit of a back and forth between the person who runs the golf there and the person that runs the girls softball. So there's definitely some of this going on, I can tell you that. So, you know, I think what would make sense if it could, again, we're looking to try and move forward tonight relative to the job. If we could leave it a little open-ended, maybe we can set up a meeting out there on a weekend, on a weekday after work or something like that, whoever's interested in doing it, take a walk, take a look at it. I mean, we're certainly, we understand the requirement, understand that these guys are willing to do what needs to be done, it's just, it originally got approved with the gravel parking spot.
But I think it's pretty clear that you could use all 95 spaces out there during the peak period. So is there, I think, I would feel more comfortable if we knew for certain we can get 95 spaces out there and we could mark all those 95 spaces with the curb, the curb stops.
Well, I think based upon what I have, we can, we can do that. I mean, if we could, again, go out there and you guys could, we could do it with spray paint or...
How many spaces do you think you added with the back?
I think there was like 78 maybe before, so whatever, whatever those two rows end up being, so you're probably talking at least 20, 25 spots, something like that.
Does, Matt, have you, I know you were out there again, does that...
It's hard to tell. I have to go out and look at what got cleared, because when I went out, it hadn't been cleared. And I think the approved plan showed four handicap spaces of the 83, that include the 83, because right now there's no handicap marked out there.
Yeah, I think the handicap are included.
In the 83, okay. Yeah, I'd have to look at it again, because I haven't seen it since it got cleared.
Can I show you this? This one I did. I like, I cleared out here, I just wanted to put it on there, it's very good. But we cleared it out back then, I don't know if you, I can't see, but I think we did the white paint for delineating.
Right.
And that's when you're looking this way, and then that's the other side.
I mean, the simple answer is pavement, a parking lot, and striping it. It's right in front of everybody. Yeah.
Sure, that makes all sense in the world.
Look at that. We did put the white paint down on there. I'm going to see my phone, but we did clear it out and put the white paint for the lines, and we did put it on the railroad tie. And we did that just because you guys said we could clean it up, so we really were just cleaning it up to see, but then we were measuring it out just to see how many and see how it worked and actually marked our cars in there and just laying around with it, so.
Now let me ask you, you did talk about the additional space that may be available, like if you did take trees and stuff, because all's I'm saying is if we say that this, we're going to go forward with this and there's some type of trouble, we've got to know that there's some type of answer to that thereafter, like if that means that you go back there and you're going to have to clear more additional space for cars to park or stuff. What would you say that space that's not cleared now, that you have left, is it similar in size to what you just cleared? Is it greater than?
What's the requirement?
I guess if you went all the way down, you could probably make it greater than by the, going towards the batting cages, do you know where they are in the corner?
Yeah.
You'd probably get, if you go on both sides, maybe you get five and five on that side, five and five on the other side. But I got to tell you, I've been there 10 years, we've never used any of these back spaces, and I've never seen a car going around and around looking for a space.
Yeah.
That's just me. I'm not saying it didn't happen.
To go to...
We've also never used those back spaces.
To go to your question, Sarah, the 83 spaces were required prior to this use, okay? So this use then would therefore only be adding 12 spaces?
And I guess...
Because the approved site plan had 83 spaces on it.
Because this is like, now things are changing.
So you've never seen an issue with parking, you've never seen people circle. So where are all these extra people coming from? Is the golf range increasing your use? Is it yours?
I had that women's thing.
Right.
That's what made people looking for everybody. That's what, they were looking for spaces, but that was without this all being cleared. That's what we talked about, that's why I cleared all these spots.
Right, but that was a one-time thing, we talked about that last time. Have we gotten complaints since then?
Yes.
Yeah, I cleaned it up.
Where are all the extra people coming from?
It sounds like it's all the different uses on the site. It sounds like it's the little golf dome, it sounds like it's the driving range, it's all, it's a combined parking requirement.
So business is increasing for everybody on the site?
I don't know if it's increasing or just, you know, it's hard to tell if it's increasing or it's always been that way.
Were there pictures? Did they send pictures in?
Yes.
And it showed people parking up the entrance?
Pretty consistently. The last three weekends, we've gotten pictures showing a very full parking lot during certain times of the weekend.
Obviously, it's an adjourned public hearing, but we have never seen any, anybody, nobody's shown up here, so I think we have the right to know who and what, you know, right?
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out like what, what's different? If it's never been an issue before, then what's changed?
Right, so what's changed are we're putting two new fields on, which we indicated that when the fields are available and ready, you won't be using the indoor spots of the dome to be used. So, you know, we have, let's really call it one field on the inside, it's really less than that.
Okay.
So we're talking, we're going, we're basically adding one exterior field.
Yeah, but if the fields aren't there, why is there a traffic problem already?
Or are there?
A parking problem already?
I believe that there's not.
I don't believe there is.
Right.
And it's definitely not with the new parking spots, because we just made them three hours ago, so I know, and it has nothing to do with them. So, you got pictures? I don't understand, but to me, it sounds like it's somebody who doesn't want me to do it, might be a little bit closer than I would imagine to me, as is me.
If I could just add, Hudson Valley Engineering had asked for a couple of things which they hadn't received yet. They had asked for documentation regarding anticipated amount of traffic and required parking space. I don't believe we got that yet.
Oh, yeah.
It makes it ideally consideration should be given to provide a separate parking for field use. In lieu of providing additional parking, a parking study survey is recommended to ensure adequate parking is available for the existing proposed uses. So I don't think we've got any of that documentation, so I don't want to speak too much for the HVEA, but you know, if you count up all the batting cages, you count up all the places that the golf ball, you count up the mini golf, size of the dome, the size of the fields, they should be provide us some tabulation, right? Some documentation just to say that in writing.
That's all I'm trying to say is what we're trying to work towards.
Here it is, you know, regardless of what the prior site plan showed.
And then some type of demarcation, like if we can, if there's not going to be pavement there, some type of demarcation of spaces so that we really do know, and then obviously they have to delineate what's handicap, and then are we going to have to provide handicap for each use?
No.
Just one bank of handicap?
Yeah, the handicap is based off of the number of total spaces in the lot.
Okay.
When you use these fields outside, is that going to be primarily on the weekends? Is it weekday practices? Is it all the time? Because it sounds like there's a concentrated time that's in demand.
We don't really use the dome on the weekends in the spring and summer, they're out playing and we don't play around here, so that's definitely true. During the week, we use the fields, yes. During the weekends, will we use the field if it's, if somebody needs a practice? I would say yes, I don't want to say we don't use it, you know, but would it be overly populated, populated on a weekend? I don't see that, because most teams play, but there are teams that are off that weekend, so they would probably do it.
How many teams do you have?
Nine.
Okay. So like one in each age group?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand where the congestion on the weekends is coming from and the complaints, that's all.
I think the complaint is that there is an existing parking issue and that we're adding a use, and they do not feel that there's sufficient parking there with the added use.
Got it.
And the request by HVEA would have helped answer that question, I believe.
What's the date on that letter?
The date is May 21st, and the items were the ones that Scott just mentioned.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't call in being involved with this one, but okay.
Well, let's get to the public. Are there any members of the public that are here to speak for or against the project? There are not. So additional questions or comments by board members or professionals? Well, I think, and I'd like to get a sense from the board, I think we still have a number of fairly serious questions about parking that have not been answered.
I can't afford that.
And I think it's important that we get behind that prior to the approval.
Michelle, do we have an approximate time of day on the weekend that, if there's the issue? This has been consistent, like Saturday mornings or is it...
I can check to see if there's been any discussion about the time of day, I can't recall off the top of my head.
I'm willing to volunteer for the board, I don't live far from there, I could certainly go there Saturday and Sunday, but I just want to know approximate times, I can certainly report back if that's helpful.
I would do the same. I'm in proximity, I couldn't do it this weekend, but I would...
I could do it this weekend if you want to take the next one.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, I just, we've, we've cleared additional spaces, I want to make sure there's reasonable parking for all the uses at, at the peak time, I think that's, makes sense. I don't mind going and taking a good look.
Or maybe if the board coordinate with Jackie and something go around so we all know when, where, and what, you know?
Okay. So if there are no other questions or comments, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Yes.
You said adjourn to the next meeting?
Yes. Sorry, wasn't clear. Next item on the agenda is a solar array. At the last meeting, Rich Campbell recused himself from consideration of this because of his involvements. I too am going to recuse myself, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Swiss Hamlet Homewares Association in which this lot is located. So both of us will remove ourselves from the dais, and I will turn it over temporarily to Lori G. to act as chairperson.
Very good. Thanks, Michelle. Do we have anything we need to open? So do I have a motion, an apology, can you just pronounce the name for me?
Oh, so the homeowner's name is Pashtim Vuktilaj.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for Vuktilaj Pashtim?
Second.
An apologies...
No worries.
...to the family if I mispronounced that. Okay, do you want to give us a quick overview of the project?
Sure. I guess our, my name is Patrick, I'm with Empire Solar Solutions, and I'm representing the homeowner on this case. And the install is pretty straightforward, we just want to do a ground-mounted solar array in their backyard. It will be 48 panels, and the panels will be REC 410 watt panels, that's a make and model. The entire array is, it's in the backyard, it is, it's the, if you look at the hill, oh, sorry, if you look at the property, it's on a slanted hill, so the array will be at the bottom of that hill, it's got good tree coverage, and we couldn't do a roof-mounted solution because he didn't have enough roof space for the number of panels that would meet his energy demands.
And that's the standard residential, you can't go more than 20% of what his...
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so any questions?
I saw some notes that you had some plantings proposed, I think around the panels you just described.
Yes, so I believe it's two at the bottom and then three, oh, two at the southern face and then three at the northwest side of the array, if you're looking at the array. So he's got a neighbor to the south and a neighbor to the, basically west, and they're backyards, if you were to go to certain parts, you would be able to see the array, so we're willing to do any tree coverage that the board deems necessary.
So right now they have five trees proposed, and they're proposing six-foot arborvitae at planting. So we typically put a condition in that when they, when it goes in, I kind of go out and take a look at it, make sure that it visually buffers what needs to be done, and if additional planting is needed, we add that.
Sure.
I saw this border, the tachonic, is there anything we need to do from the highway perspective? It's 100 feet from the buffer, but...
No, we just need to make sure that it's visually buffered.
Okay.
And I think I had added about level spreaders beneath the panels, because there is drainage that flows to the tachonic, so we can address that during the building permit application.
I saw that note. Questions or comments from board members?
I think there's enough trees around the sides and, you know, with the addition of the...
Entirely, right?
I think it should be fine. I mean, if you look where the other houses are, it's not, it doesn't look like it's going to interfere.
Michelle or Scott, anything additional to mention? Do we have anyone here from the public who would like to offer comment on this application?
Yes.
If you come up, I think we have a sign-in sheet at the podium, if you want to just provide your...
Yep, I already signed it.
...for us for our minutes, and then...
Good way, give them two.
Yes.
Just leave it there.
You just write your name on there, yes?
It's on there.
Yeah, perfect, great.
Robert Bossy at Hamlet Way.
Thank you.
So I live in the house, I believe, to the west, is that right?
Oh, is that you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to disagree with Mr. Pepe there. My house overlooks that lot, I'm able to see basically everything, and this array is going to be 12 feet in the air, 80 feet across, and I'm going to get the pleasure of seeing the back of it. So the six-foot arborvitae's and three of them, from my perspective, are not going to be anywhere near enough, they need to be taller and they need to be more numerous to cover it, because from every point in my backyard, I'm going to be able to see that thing. And for him to save a couple hundred bucks on his electric bill, how many thousands am I going to lose on my, on my equity of my house? That seems a little unfair. So I think the board, I would hope that the board would be a little more attentive to making sure that we're not adversely impacted any more than we need to be. And right now, the way it looks to me, at least from my perspective, I'm going to be pretty adversely impacted by the view of that thing.
If the plantings were adjusted, so there was maybe a staggered arborvitae to provide the screening, does that make sense?
Well, they need to be taller at planting, because six feet, you know, again, I'm up the hill, the hill goes down, I'm going to be looking over those plantings and seeing everything. And basically, from every point in my house and outside, so the trees should be larger at planting, and there should be at least three more covering the backside, swinging around the backside of the array in order to give me some kind of retress. I mean, it just seems a little overkill to me, but...
How much higher are you than that lot?
I believe, if I'm guessing, I could see, I'm level with the top of the roof, so it's got to be at the base of my lot.
At ground level?
Yeah, so if I'm standing in my driveway, I'm seeing their roof, so it's got to be at least 30 to 35 feet higher. And my house then is above that. So looking down, I'm going to get the full impact.
Are you the white house or beige house?
It's a, yeah, it's a beige. I'm sorry?
You're northwest of the other house.
Yes, up the hill. Mike, this is my neighbor, Mike, he's on the opposite side, he's going to get the pleasure of seeing the front of this, yeah, the front of this apparatus.
Elevation issue as well.
Yeah, I see that.
I love staring right down at it, from my kitchen, my bedroom, my deck, and from my pool.
Oh, sorry, just bear with us, we'll take you one at a time.
We want to gang up on you guys.
I got you. Okay. Any other, any other comments or concerns you want to raise and then we'll...
I mean, I think, you know, again, I'm just hoping that the board will take a more stringent view of the necessity for screening, because we are going to be seeing this thing, and I understand people want to have solar and stuff, but again, I think the adverse impact to the property value is going to be substantial. So I think that we need to do more in terms of the screening. Height of the trees definitely have to increase, at least on my side, and I think on Mike's as well, and they need to be more numerous, at least, at a minimum six, I would say, but maybe even more than that depending, you know, once it's in, I get a better idea. It's hard to tell from the plan, but, but right now, it's completely inadequate.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to also offer comment if I can have you just sign in for me?
Yes, I'm already signed in.
Oh, great.
Mike Russo, Five Hamlet. So what I propose is maybe a site visit, so you can actually physically see what we're dealing with from the inside of our homes, from our decks, from our pool areas, backyards, and get a better understanding of just the height elevation that we have in that area. I do have some photographs.
Okay.
I don't know if that'll help.
Sure. Are you able to leave them with the, with the board?
Yeah, there's three different ones, one's from ground level, one is from my back, and one is from my kitchen window.
Thank you.
And this is looking down at the property?
Yeah, the property, the property has, I mean, it's kind of right after that swing seat there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the home and that's fencing we have there.
So is this, is this you here?
Yes. No? Yeah, that's me.
Okay.
As well as myself, I'm not, listen, solar, solar, I don't have an issue with that. I think my bigger issue is I have two six-foot arborvitae's as the proposal there, I don't think it's nearly enough. I mean, six foot with a 30-foot, 40-foot elevation, I don't know what it does for me, you know, in terms of, you know, I purchased up there honestly for the topography of the nature
In terms of, you know, I purchased up there honestly for the topography of the nature in the backyards. And to see the trees, the woods, and now I'm going to be staring at solar panels. You know, it's not really, it's not really what I find for the future, you know?
Do solar panels reflect? Is there glare off of them?
No, they're all. That's really it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to offer comment before we bring the applicant? Come on up. Are you signed in?
Yeah, no, but I can right now.
Thank you.
So I'm in the neighborhood as well, not a neighboring property. So I'm not going to really be that affected by it. But I guess I'm here because I'm in the neighborhood and I'd like to understand what, what is allowed with these ground-mounted panels? Are they allowed in a residential zone like this?
And I'm sorry, just your name for.
Steven, sorry. So they're allowed in a residential zone, ground-mounted solar panels?
They are, yes. A small number of them and they have to meet specific criteria, but yes.
Okay, and so as far as the visual, I agree with the site, the idea of looking at this on site because if they're allowed, they're allowed, I understand. But if neighboring properties are taken into consideration for approval, then you should see the properties because these are houses that are valued upwards of almost $1 million. And yet, we're going to allow somebody, really, if you look at the pictures of what they're doing with their property, they took all the trees away from some of the neighboring properties. So they clear, what you're seeing on Google Maps has been cleared. So you think maybe there's a buffer with some trees, but it was cleared out. And then they're going to put a pretty large array down in the backyard. And you could see it from a full pool deck or from a deck off the back of the house. And it's, it's a pretty big eyesore. And I'm, I'm even surprised it's allowed at all, but now I know. But I would just, I think that's a consideration that I would like brought up because I think it'll set precedence for whoever else wants to put a pretty monstrous obstruction in their yard that I can stare, would have to stare at in the future. But you have to see the site because it's really unique. And I truly, I, I'm in land surveying and civil engineering. I don't know how you would cover these based on the topography. They're good 50 feet above where these panels are going to be. And trees really do nothing. I mean, you know, how would you cover anything that way? But that, that's it, so.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to offer comment?
Oh, can I just say, I don't know if it's staked out.
Oh, we'll just have you come back up to the mic.
I don't know if it's staked out either. So if we're going to go look at it on the site, it should be staked out. Survey markers or even balloons, right, something so you, you guys could get a feel for where they're actually going. Because I even looked at the map and without going with a tape measure to figure out how far down the slope it is, I don't, I don't really know.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
So do I get a chance to respond or what are the next steps?
Absolutely. I think we've heard a couple of things. The first thing we heard was that there's probably some additional screening that might be required, different sizes. My name, Michelle, you usually advise the board on those sorts of things. So I'm not opposed to that. And I think the other thing we heard was that a site visit might be advisable for this particular one. I don't know how the board feels. I'm not opposed to it. I appreciate any feedback or comments.
I guess my question, and I would be okay with a site visit, is the renderings that we see are aerial and not, you know, 3D as if we were standing there like somebody mentioned. You know, it's 12 feet in the air. So I'd be interested to see what that would look like if you were standing on the property.
Sure, yeah, we'd be willing to stake it out for a site visit. I did bring some photos of the site that we took. I don't know if you guys.
This was in the original package?
This was in, these are the same ones from the package?
Here's the way it would look like from that perspective.
We have these, yeah. Yeah, we have these, yeah.
So, you know, these, so these, all of these panels are lower than the surrounding area, right?
Yeah, they're going to be, they're going to be, they're going to be pretty far down the slope.
So that the adjacent houses actually look down on that array.
Is there another location for the panels that would work?
I mean, the whole backyard is pretty much down slope. We could move them closer to, I'd have to look at the, I'd have to look at how it compares to this survey because I know there are setback requirements we need to meet.
The reason they're not on the roof of the house is there's not enough area?
Yeah, there's just not enough room to meet its energy demands.
Thoughts on site visit or?
I'm okay with the site visit. I mean, it's pretty clear from Google Maps. You can look at the cul-de-sac and see how steep the driveway is to the left and to the right. I mean, it's very clear that the, the foundation of the house to the left is above the roof line of the house that is in question. It's pretty clear. I don't know, I mean, short of putting trees on their property, but even that's not going to help the house, the view from inside the house, but at least from the yard, possibly.
We actually have looked at that before where the trees aren't necessarily adjacent to the panel or more up close to the property line, necessarily on the neighbor's property. But, but on the property line as opposed to.
Yeah, that would be better.
And any feedback?
I'm just wondering why it's got to be 12 feet tall. That seems awful high. I mean, I think that most of them are.
It's just for the number of panels and the tilt that we have to put them at to optimize the energy production.
Why do they need so many panels?
Yeah.
I mean, solar is very popular now and we see them on lots of roofs, but we don't normally see them on the ground next to a single-family house.
Yeah, I mean, that was just when we ran the numbers on their energy uses, that was just the number we came up with to meet their demands.
Is it possible to make it smaller if you put some on the roof and then the rest on the ground?
I mean, it's a lot easier said than done. I mean, there would still be, if we were to take off, I don't know, even if we did take off, let's say, six or nine panels, because we have them, oh, no, there was a four. So let's say we took off eight to 12 panels. They're still going to be, we're still going to be in the same position. So it wouldn't really, it wouldn't really change the discussion we're having right now.
Okay. Shall we schedule a formal site visit then with the board? Michelle, are you able to help us coordinate that and be there? I think it would be a suggestion to have it staked out so we understand where it would be installed and the dimensions, I think would be very helpful.
So I'm more than willing to do a site visit. I think that would be helpful. But what are we looking for? Like, what are our options when we see the elevations? And what, I mean, what options do we even have at this point to kind of help everybody?
Well, I mean, I guess when you, hopefully, when you go out there, you'll get a sense of whether or not you think that there's anything that screening can or cannot do. And then ultimately, it's up to you guys to issue the special permit for the solar. So you have to decide whether or not you think that the proposed solar installation meets the conditions of the special permit or can meet the conditions of the special permit. And there wouldn't be any significant adverse impacts.
And the screening that we are looking for has to be on the subject property, correct?
Well, I think really the applicant should propose screening. And then it may or may not be acceptable to the board. But I think if you're, if the board's coming out for a site visit, you should have marked out where you would have screening that would minimize the impact to the neighbors.
Sure, okay. I mean, another option we could do is if we wanted to put them closer to the array, it would just, in terms of line of sight, he would see the trees more than he would see the actual panels. So that's another option that we could look at. Or we could just plant more trees. I mean, I know the six feet doesn't sound like a lot, but they do grow to probably like 20 feet. So it's going to take us a second. I understand that's, it's kind of difficult, but.
It would be a couple of years for that to happen.
I think, you know, you'd be better off if you mounted them closer to the property line. You're going to put trees in like evergreens or whatever, but they're going to, it's going to be incredibly costly. You know, you're going to need a slew of them. And, and not just six footers, you're going to need like 20 footers. And that can't be cheap. But, I mean, that's one way. So you completely block the view of those panels from the house on the, on the northwest. And then you have to do something for the one other southeast similar to, to completely block the, the view, their view of that property that slopes down from the house that you're putting their panels in.
We tend to not fully screen something like that. We tend to want to break the view up. So I'm not disagreeing about more trees and all that. I guess I'm. I mean, I'm not sure it should be a hedgerow though. That's not usually what we would do.
I think, I think the site visit will help you understand whether, what you're dealing with as far as what is actually possible with screening the view. Because from my understanding of what the neighbors are saying is that it may not be possible because of the topography.
Yes.
So I think that that's really what the site visit may be. What you're going to get out of the site visit.
Do we want to try to pick a date now? Do we want to try to schedule it offline from the meeting? We're in a public hearing, so.
Yeah, I can have Jackie send around an email to everyone and we can, you know, pick a date.
Hopefully before the next meeting, we can adjourn to the next meeting and have, the board will have visited the site.
Yeah.
And you'll be able to stake it out before we get there. So let's make sure whatever date we pick, you're able to have it clearly delineated for us.
Yeah, that's fine. Do you need someone from our company to be there for the site visit?
I think that would probably be helpful.
Okay.
I would certainly want somebody to be there.
Sure, no, of course.
And I would actually.
Your property without, or an applicant's property without representation.
And I think we may want to actually be able to visit your properties as well to understand. So we'll let you know if you could just leave your contact information with the planning board clerk.
Thank you. So we will arrange a site visit between now and our next meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn to the July 16th meeting? Do you have a second? Second, second, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And do we want to bring, John, thank you. Our, our next item on the agenda is Shenandoah Lake Estates for Russo. And John will be right back in just a moment to run that. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good evening. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is a discussion item for Shenandoah Lake Estates.
Good evening. The last time we were here, we went through this application. This one's unique again. We have an existing subdivision that was created back in 1978. A number of homes were constructed since that time. And there's a couple of remaining lots that are left. My applicant has one of them. And going through the building permit process with the town, there is some fill that has to be brought into the parcel. If we work our way up the hill, starting with the septic, there is over 1,000 yards of material that has to be brought in for the septic. Just to revisit the septic portion of this, it was recently updated by the health department. We've used the latest flow rates and newer technology to try to reduce the footprint of that septic as much as possible. And as it relates to home construction, the lot slopes off dramatically from the edge of road. And what we've tried to do is step the house down following the contour of the land, but it still requires almost 1,500 yards of material to be brought in to shape around the house. So, and speaking with the town planner, we are here tonight just to seek input from the board on the proposed action and work through some of the notes that are on the original subdivision map and see how they, they work with this project. But I think ultimately, while we work through any note issues on the subdivision plan, what we're hoping for tonight, since our initial discussions were how this impacts the community, is to, you know, eventually open this up to a public hearing and see actually what the public comments are as it relates to the proposal that we have.
I'm sorry, you said it, but I didn't catch it.
Just to have a public hearing, just try to have a public.
For the fill, I mean, what, where are you at now?
As far as fill quantity numbers? So if we look at the original filed map, that goes back to '78, it had two foot, it had five foot and 10-foot contours on it. It didn't have a setback line. It didn't show a house location. It just showed a basic septic footprint. And it said two foot of fill, four foot of fill, depending upon the soil test back in the day. So the original filed map didn't even show any grading contours on it. So we did an analysis. The original septic, I believe, on the original filed map was 1,090 cubic yards on the original filed map. With our latest update with the board of health using newer technology and reduced flow rates, we're at 1,300 yards.
Okay, I think last time we saw this, it was 2,800, right?
So that's relating.
That's only the septic?
That's just the septic. As we kind of go up the hill, again, we're doing that step-down construction to try to reduce fill as much as possible. So around the house, you're looking at 1,500 yards around the house. So if you take the 1,500 and the septic quantity, that's how you get up to that 2,800 mark.
Brian, if I could, you did say there's, it shows a footprint, but it also shows a typical section where it's a uniform two feet on the slope. So if you do that math, it's more like less than 500 yards.
I don't, I don't think that's the way it works because.
That's what's shown.
That's, no, it's a generic, the, the, the detail may show a generic two foot of fill. But if you look at how the septic is laid out on the actual subdivision plan, the actual grade is a little bit steeper. So you may start at two at the top of the pad. But as grade falls off and you hold 15% at the bottom of the fill pad, you're about five. So if you look at our newer design, we start at four because we had to bring fill in because the original septic designs weren't as accurate as they should have been. So now that we conform with health department regs, we're starting at four and we're almost ending at nine. And we're holding the same philosophy where you have the 15% top grade. So although the, the detail may say two uniform, what the plan shows grading-wise is a little bit more than that.
Is that 15% the required, like maximum slope or something for?
Yeah, your top of your pad, finished grade is 15% max.
So to make a revision to a filed map, what level of approval do you need to get from the affected property owners?
Well, I think this is the first time we've, I've dealt with this in East Fischke. To give you perspective, this subdivision started, or was completed on paper in '78. Since I've been working in East Fischke since '98, we've, I personally, between both firms, have probably worked on 10 or 11 homes that have been constructed since 1998. And in each one of those instances, we had to redesign the septic. The original filed map information wasn't trusted. So we actually had to go through and individually redesign each one of these septics. So, and in each circumstance, there was never a reduction in fill, it was always an increase. And the reason why is depth rock. So I never had to come back to the board to refile a map because of a fill discrepancy. So this is, this is the first time we're here for this. So we're, I think I'm figuring this out as you're figuring it out.
And there's no alternate location that you can move the septic to that reduces it at all? Or the house itself?
Right, we have, we have the house pushed up. The front yard setback is 50 foot. We're at 51. We have a front-low garage. So we're coming in at a negative 3.7, code is four. So we're coming down as sharp as possible to lower the footprint. We're dropping the basement down for a walkout. So we're trying to follow the slope of the grade coming down. And again, we've, we've redesigned the septic using current technology, which is lower flow rates and infiltrators, which reduces the septic footprint by almost 25%. So we've, we've kind of tried to do this being sensitive to truck traffic and fill that's being imported into the site.
Is this for a three-bedroom or four-bedroom?
We did a four-bedroom on this.
So if you did three, that would reduce the size, obviously.
Correct.
So I might just ask, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but Michael, do you have any thoughts on what needs to be done to be able to make this revision to a filed?
So I was able to speak with Brian and then we agreed, we discussed this further. Normally when there's a note on a filed map, there's this case, O'Mara versus Town of Wappinger. It was a court of appeals case, was the highest court in New York State. And in order to get that, that note removed, it would generally be that you'd have to get approval from all the other owners in the subdivision. But, but I know Brian has his counter-arguments, so we're willing to review all those and then look at it further.
Okay.
So our code has changed significantly since then, like in 2000. Our local law was enacted that completely changed the land exhumation and filling. And it doesn't allow for fill, like at all, unless it's on an original subdivision. Is that correct?
That's my reading. I think there's a discrepancy in how we're reading that special permit in cases. So we're going back to take a look at how we've applied it in the past. But yeah, that, my understanding is that, or my reading of it is that it, you're, when you do a subdivision, you're, it's intended that you describe what fill you need because that's done as part of a secret process, right? And, and once you start bringing in fill, you have potentially drainage changes and other things. So you want to make sure that that's studied as part of an approval.
And the intention is to move fill around the lots versus bringing it in or taking it out even, right?
And also, once you bring in. Right, and also, once you bring in and take out, you have additional impacts related to truck traffics to neighbors and existing subdivisions.
Right, and that's why our, if you look at the plan set that created the subdivision, it's, it's one page, maybe two pages, that created 44 lots, right?
Yep.
Phillips Farm, which we did, which we just did, is 15 pages. You know, so it's, it's, there's a lot, that's how we used to do it. And because of issues with neighbors and drainage and how the town highway deals with things, and as development has progressed, the plan sets have also progressed. So I, you know, there was, there's a series of checks and balances as it relates to newer subdivisions. But when we're trying to take current standards and apply it to something that was done back in the late 70s, that's, that's where we're, we're kind of running into that issue here. And that's why being sensitive of neighbors and truck traffic, that's why we've tried to push the house forward, drop, step the house down, reduce the size of the septic to the greatest extent possible so we could try to meet those, those neighbor needs. So what I was thinking was, as we work through the note situation, if we could schedule a public hearing, because I don't know if we're there, but at least ask for it, since I think a lot of this is generated around neighbors and impacts, is let's, you know, let's, let's hear from the neighbors and let's address it.
So, but that aside, there's no building code issues that Sarah was just discussing? Is it just neighbor issues that we'd be talking about here?
I think there's a difference in opinion on what the town code allows as well.
And how, how do we reconcile that difference?
Well, I think, you know, between now and the next meeting, Brian will probably give his reasons why, he'll give his argument as to why the note on the filed map doesn't preclude this, his proposal, and also why his, why his client's proposal meets the town code.
Okay.
What recourse does the town have? So we can't issue a special permit on this, or we can? Or that's what's unclear?
That's what's unclear.
That's what's unclear. If we can issue the special permit, does the subdivision still have to be adjusted? Or not? Like what's the, what's the process from here? And what, what are our options?
So the process from here, so. If you're taking a very strict reading of everything, it's, then they wouldn't be able to get the fill under the town code, so it just stops there. And even if they could, then they would have to get the sign off from every single other owner in the subdivision. I'm not necessarily saying that's what it is, but that's the very strict reading of everything.
And how many people in that subdivision, if you don't mind me asking?
So I think we have 40-plus lots. And I think vacant-wise.
Yes.
One, two. There may be only two lots left.
Okay. And there's nothing with regards to like grandfathering in what's already been.
Well, I think that's the argument Brian's going to make.
Sure.
I mean, the subdivision's been.
Well, he's grandfathered to a certain extent. The problem is going beyond that.
Obviously, yeah, because the rules have gone.
So a significant recontouring of the land. You got this, you know, and I think it's really just the adjacent homeowners that are most vested in this.
Yes.
And then also, you know, if the house is modified, what, how much fill is needed?
Right.
You know, I think you're looking at 140, 150 truckloads. So.
Right.
The neighbor has babies at sleep and trucks come in. It's, you know, these are the considerations you gotta, you gotta make, you know?
Is the house you're proposing roughly the same size as others in the neighborhood? Or is it larger?
That's roughly the same as the newer homes that are in that. Again, this subdivision goes back to 78. But the newer homes that I've been involved with since 98, I think we've done almost 12 of them in there. They're all, they're all bigger size homes.
Do you create any stormwater issues with all that fill you're bringing in?
So when we submitted our building permit, we did an engineered plot plan. We took a look at drainage areas that were coming toward the property. And we did design the plot plan to have swales and check dams to slow velocities down so they wouldn't erode. From a sequencing standpoint, we would start construction-wise from the lower part of the, part of the lot. So typically you start with the house foundation. But in this circumstance, we'd probably start putting the fill in for the septic, stabilizing as we go. And then as we work early up to the foundation, that's when we would begin house construction. So we had a pretty detailed plot plan that had erosion control blankets. We had seeding specifications, hydroseed, things to get the area stabilized quick so we don't have an erosion issue. So we did, we did take a look at that, but we can, we can expand upon that with, with the town engineer.
Now, the other undeveloped lots in that development, are any of them in the same sort of state of affairs that they would require the same?
I, this, out of, let's see, there's one, two, there's three lots that remain. So there's two lots on Appalachian West, and there's one in Appalachian East. The, the additional lot on Appalachian West, which is going north, it's up on the same side of the road, two parcels. It will have the same type of setup where we have a step-down walkout basement with septic in the back. As far as the, the fill amount, the grades look a little bit shallower. So if we're talking about a worst-case scenario, this is probably the lot in the subdivision.
And the other ones, would you say, would they be within 10, 20, 30% of the infill that you're required here?
Well, I would say the one lot on Appalachian East wouldn't be an even, wouldn't be an issue. You could use onsite material. It's relatively flat. But the lot, I believe is Lot 18. It would probably have, I mean, I haven't looked at it yet, but just looking from a topography standpoint, it'd probably half, maybe 60% less.
Okay. I mean, because obviously if it's there, it's going to be with the other ones.
Yeah.
And everywhere else.
Yeah, so we have to kind of figure out where we're going from here, not just on the one lot.
I know we're focused on, on the fill, but is there anything else about this lot that requires any kind of variances or anything else we should be talking about?
And I think just the, you answered about the steep slopes last time, but I'm not remembering if I.
Right, so steep slopes is defined by slope, but it's also defined dimensionally, length and width. So we do have areas that have steep slopes, but to meet the threshold that requires a steep slopes permit, we don't have that.
So in terms of area, you don't have it even though you do have steep slopes on the property?
Right.
Is that what you meant?
Yeah, so on the steep slope section, it's probably the biggest is, it's probably 25 foot off the right-of-way. As you come in off the town road, the lot drops dramatically, and then it kind of levels out and then it goes down again. So right where the house foundation going is, is, is being set, the steep slope faces right in front, like the front walk. So that's why we're stepping the basement down and walking out.
And the, the area where you'll have the septic is already perked and tested?
Or the other, I guess.
Okay.
So it sounds like what the next step is for the applicant to get together with staff, and we try to figure out the best course for moving forward that's agreeable to all sides. So we will probably see you next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Paradise Preserve subdivision.
And just to announce, our planners recusing herself on this matter due to conflict.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Rick Bolander with Bolander Engineering. The last time we were in front of you for Paradise Preserve, I was not part of the "we." The presentation was done by Ms. Sarka Lep, a very thorough presentation. It was with me tonight. Along with.
In fact, I complimented that presentation.
Yes, absolutely. I saw that in the minutes. I'm also joined by Mr. Pete Malione and his wife, who are the owners of the property. Obviously, as you are aware, no updated plans have been submitted. But I just wanted to get the ball rolling again on the project as the meet, the last meeting was in October of 2023. I've reviewed the minutes. I've also reviewed the, the comment letter from that evening. And we're going through and just progressing the plans. We're working with the Duchess County Department of Health along with the DEP for stormwater and septic approvals. I, I think one of the glaring comments in here was about the amount of disturbance and the, you know, whether we're over the five-acre disturbance or not. In my past life at another engineering firm, I'm well-versed in the, the language of the DEP and the amount of disturbance over five acres. I've already started putting together a phasing plan, which I've kind of ironed out with the owner just about. Because it's six lots, it kind of lends itself to phasing. So trying to limit the total amount of disturbance at one time to, you know, just over an acre, not really coming close to the five-acre amount of disturbance. And that'll be described and shown on a plan that will be provided to the DEP for their sign-off. And I noticed some just mostly technical comments in here, you know, driveway steepness, and again, stormwater and, and septic. So just wanted to introduce myself, and I'll, you know, I'll be kind of heading this up now with the help of Sarka. And we're just kind of cruising through and, and looking to get the approvals from the, the Health Department and the DEP.
So I'm trying to recall, does a part of the property, I think, extend into another town?
Mm-hmm, the town.
But the subject proposal is all entirely within?
Fishkill.
The town of East Fishkill?
Yes.
Got it.
Correct. So that, yeah, that's really it. And then, and obviously, as we get, as those approvals come in, we'll be providing that to town. And I guess just one question while I, while I have you. Just procedure-wise, as those approvals come in, would the next time I present in front of you, would that be essentially with approvals in hand and then?
I, I think as long as you've started the process.
Sure.
And it's moving forward, and you can kind of give us some assurances that you're being listened to, which is going to be difficult to probably recommend. But, but no, you don't have to have the approvals in hand for us for the, for the next time we get together.
Understood. Good.
Any questions or comments by board members? Any questions or comments from staff?
Is this the one that there's old cottages?
Correct.
Yes.
And that'll be part of the removal of those cottages be part of this application?
Yes. And that'll be part of the disturbance and then those numbers.
Okay.
Wasn't there a question last time you were here about the watershed? That it was located in the East Hudson watershed? And there was like a, a different version of the SWIP that was required? Something to that effect?
There's a few just more stringent requirements. If you're outside of the watershed, your water quality volume is your amount of impervious area at times an inch and a half of rainwater. Now it's the, because it's in the DEP watershed, it's the one-year rainfall event, which in this area is about 2.8 inches. So it essentially doubles your water quality volume, which is what we're looking to infiltrate in infiltration basins. Another requirement during construction, and this will be coordinated with the DEP, but usually that require two site, two S and E site visits during construction instead of the one per week. And there is, and then just, which would come with infiltration is just the enhanced phosphorus removal is a requirement in the DEP watershed. That's essentially the additional requirements on top of just the standard New York State SWIP.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay. Well, excellent. Thank you. And so can we expect to see you next meeting or?
That's the plan, yes.
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
See ya.
Have a good night.
All right, next item on the agenda is Precious Angels. Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
So I'm Desiree Testerman, and I live over at 118 Brandy Lane. I'm here to receive a special permit so I can continue running my in-home daycare. I've been licensed for about 40 years now. I follow all the rules and regulations with the Duchess County Council.
I'm looking for my information on this. Thank you. Okay. So, and pardon me for actually not paying attention. From whom, you've been operating for how long?
Um, oh, about 22 years, 22 years.
Okay, got it, excellent. Anything special about your operation that would be interesting for share?
Well, I tend to take care of a lot of the community families.
Gotcha.
Offer a safe environment to have their children come and go. Reliability, love, a little extra TLC.
How many children do you have?
Six to eight, it varies, you know, with the holidays. And sometimes I may have up to 12. I have, I'm involved with the whole Wappinger Central School District. All the bus drivers are basically know me throughout the years because I do have kids that are before and after school also.
Got it.
So I'm just looking to continue my business and do what I have to do to maintain this special permit, if that's the requirement that I need.
Any questions or comments by board members? Or by staff, yes, Scott?
I do have, we have one little issue that there's a drainage easement behind this home. And there, there has been an encroachment into the easement. So we've sent a letter out, we've got a response, but that's an ongoing issue that needs to get resolved.
Got it.
We do have some localized flooding in the area.
So is that something that we want to add as a condition of the resolution?
I would say so, yes.
That it be satisfied to the satisfaction of town engineer?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Any questions or comments by others?
And, and just can I ask, when the state issues your permit, do they come out and do a field site visit?
Yes, I have to follow all these, they basically pop in quarterly, unannounced.
So they're okay with that little pond in the back?
Yes, because I don't use anything, anything I have out there, any body of water is all fenced in.
That's all fenced and separated?
Yeah. And it's a separate part of my yard that is not used for the daycare. I have a separate area.
But it's fenced off?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And I will offer a resolution. Name of site plan, Precious Angels. Name of applicant, Desiree Testerman. Location, 118 Brandy Lane. Resolution offered by Planning Board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant applied for a special permit for a family daycare facility under Chapter 194-63 of the East Fishkill Zoning Code. And whereas the applicant meets all the conditions of the special permit, whereas the public hearing for a family daycare special permit was open and closed on June 18th, 2024. And pardon me, we did not open and close a public hearing. So may I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
All, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any members of the public here to speak for or against the project? I know we've already given board members and staff an opportunity, so accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So now we can say, whereas a public hearing for a family daycare special permit was open and closed on June 18th, 2024, whereas the proposed action is a Type II action under SEAKER, no further SEAKER reviews required, now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants a special permit for a family daycare facility at 118 Brandy Lane as depicted on the application dated 5/24/24. And be it further resolved with, with the condition that, and would you give me the language again, Scott, for the condition?
The condition, just that the resolution to the encroachment in the town's drainage easement be resolved. I know we had given originally, I think by September 1st, that they didn't want to do it in the summertime with everything going on. We just have to get back to them. We'll give them, you know, more time, you know, maybe till November 1st, something like that to get that resolved.
Great. So with that additional condition, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the Planning Board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lori. And so the vote will be by roll call. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Don Pepe.
Aye.
John Eichman. I'm an aye. Caris, thank you.
Thank you. So now, I had a sign that I always kept out, just so people know that I do exist. I did take the sign down when I received this letter to come here for the special permit. I just wanted to know, so what exactly does the special permit, does it give me, am I able to put my sign back up or does that have nothing to do with the special permit?
Can you answer that question for us, Michelle?
Was it, it was a business sign for the child daycare?
Yeah, yep. Precious daycare with my phone number.
Do you know if she had a permit for that?
No bigger than realtor sign.
Okay.
Basically.
And did, do you know if she had a permit for it to begin with?
No.
Was it just a lawn sign or?
Yeah, just a small lawn sign.
Okay.
So it's temporary?
Yeah, I actually put it away in the winter, just so, you know, it doesn't get knocked down with the snow and the snow plowing and stuff like that. It's just to keep my business going.
Okay.
Yeah. It's fine to have the sign.
Okay, perfect. So is there anything else that I need to do at this point?
Just the drainage.
Just, just see me about the drainage, yeah.
And can I range that with you?
Just call, I can give you the phone number.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead. 2428 and your start?
You'll speak with Jeannie Burke and just say we, she knows about the issue. Just schedule an appointment with me.
Okay, perfect. Okay, and I did leave deposits. There was one put in escrow. Will that be getting returned back to me?
Yeah, when you call that number, you can speak with Jeannie Burke.
About that also.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Good night. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Donovan Site Plan, 8 Nancy Court.
Thank you. Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Oliver Engel. I am the managing member of Donovan 5 BMAC LLC. I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you on this particular matter regarding our desire to build a building at 6 Nancy Court. We occupy 8 Nancy Court. We have been before you in the past. You've been very generous with respect to our ability to continue this project. And before you because we are truly at what I would call the very last mile with respect to this particular project. We have, we are basically one engineering study away from being able to complete our building, our building plans in order to obtain a building permit. And we do not plan to come before you again, except for the, if we have to restart the process, is what I'm, what I'm trying to say. We, we really, this is really the, the last, our last request. We're being very honest about this. We have gone, done a lot of work to get to this particular point. We were almost at the point of being able to obtain a building permit earlier before our extension expired on June 7. But we weren't able to, to quite make that deadline. So we're here to request six months in order to be able to finish this particular project. To give you an idea of how close we are to, to the, the end, I brought our architect, Michael Berta, right here. He's been working on this project for quite a while for, with us. And this is a rendering of what the building looks like. We think it's a really nice looking building. We think it's a better improvement, an improvement on what was proposed before. However, the, the building outline, the site plan does not have to change in any ways whatsoever in order to make it look like this, as opposed to what was planned before. We went with a pre-constructed structure simply because of some of the technical requirements that we wanted the building to have, in particular, clear span. We're a manufacturing company at number 8 Nancy. This is literally across, this would be literally across our parking lot from where we are now located. And the building, which was originally planned on that site, looked exactly or very close in terms of structural appearance to what we are in now. So we'd like to build this in order to be able to grow our company and possibly lease some of it out, depending on circumstances. And therefore we come before the board in order to, to be, be able to be, to complete that process. If you have any questions of, of Michael, I'd be pleased if you would ask them.
I just, I have a question in general. So you have an approval for, for a building, which we've been extending our approval for?
Yes.
This is a change to that building? And I would need to understand what the changes are.
So, so should I answer that?
I think I should. Excuse me.
We just need you to come to the Michael.
I'm sorry. I speak loud enough, I didn't think you needed. Name is Michael Berta, the architect for the, for the applicant. The original building design for 6 Nancy Court was very similar to the design for 8 Nancy Court, which is a trussed roof building, pitched roof, a lot of wasted space in the trusses, a lot of columns interior to support the building. And one of the requirements that they need with manufacturing is we realized what, what they're building at 8 Nancy Court is that the columns get in the way. So one of the things we did is there was no way to take that building design and to create it with no columns in the middle. It just wouldn't work. So what we did is we came and we said, all right, so there's already flat roofs on there, you know, on the, you know, the two other buildings that are there are ready that way. So we just came up with a, a pre-engineered, a pre-engineered steel building that we can get clear spans on it. So that was what.
Okay, so and my, I have even like more basic questions.
Okay, sorry.
Has the footprint changed?
No, we are, we, we actually, we actually used the same footprint in a couple spots. We actually brought it in a little bit. Because the original footprint had a lot of jogs in it and a couple of them, like the one here beside, for instance, it was a 20, there's about a 30 foot long footprint or a bump out that we eliminated. So in some cases, we came in a little bit.
Okay. And then was the original building two full stories like that?
No, it was, it was a single story, same as this. This may look like it's a two-story, but it's actually, it's a, it's a single story. We have, we have about 18 foot clear to the underneath of the steel, the steel framing. But we, because it's, but this, in order to get the 18 foot clear, we're about a 24 foot tall building by the time we put the parapets up. Just that low glass, it would look terrible. So the upper windows that you look at are just to bring light into the manufacturing areas.
Okay, so this is new to, to me. So they previously had an extension for an approval that they had back in 2000, I think it was nine, right?
Nine, yeah.
They went to the ARC or ARB at the time, got the approval. So this building has not been approved?
It has.
Yes.
The letter says it's been back to the.
Yeah.
When did you go back to the ARC?
February, I believe. We went back to the ARB.
But under whose referral?
That I can't answer.
We did it on our own, I guess.
We, we, I guess we approached them and said we wanted to change the building design. And they said, okay, just submit your application to them.
Okay.
Wouldn't that have to come from us?
I wouldn't, yes.
Normally we refer you to.
So, okay.
I would think at this point, that would be a new application at this point. I mean, gee, you know, if this project was a kid, it'd be in high school by now. You've got 19 extensions already. I mean, let's start from scratch here.
And each time it was the last one.
Exactly. I have very little conference, little confidence that this is actually going to happen, but based on.
Well, all I can tell you to, to help with your confidence is that we, we do have the Steel Building Company working on the design for the building right now. And if they were a little quicker on getting the engineering done on it, we probably would have had a foundation plan able to be put in. So we're anticipating their design very soon. And then once we get that, then the structural engineer is just sitting and waiting in order to design the foundation for it.
Are we just doing this in amended site plan?
It, it is definitely in the process.
So you're asking for six months. Do you really need six months?
Right.
Would three months be sufficient?
I guess it has been for the.
Can I just, my understanding is that the, the engineering study that's required has not.
We're having a hard time.
Oh, I'm so sorry. My, my understanding is from, from the, the engineering study that's required, it is going to take about another eight weeks. So that's two out of three months that you're proposing. Six months, I think, would absolutely guarantee the termination of this project successfully. I think three months, the way, the way everybody is busy, et cetera, I think we might be before you and I don't think you'd be very pleased to see us. So I, I think six months would be a way to, to do it right.
Have you been through the process with us where you confirm whether or not your current site plan would have required any changes based on our current laws?
Yes, that has come up at least once or twice. Michael Gillespie was the engineer on this. He wrote letters and various other provided documentation.
Oh, and the last one was, the last time he did that?
I, I don't have a date, couple of years perhaps.
Because the zoning has changed. It was industrial zoning, it's now B3 zoning. So, but, but beyond that, I think we're in amended site plan territory here with the changes that have gone on. And I think we need, this needs to be an amended site plan application.
Which would, would include all of the requirements like public hearings and that sort of thing as well?
And it would include us referring them typically to the ARC, yeah.
Well, necessarily, Mike, maybe it's a minor amendment. It's up to you, you know, the board.
Well, the building, I can, I know for a fact, doesn't look anything like it did.
No, I get that, yeah.
And it sounds like the footprint of the building's changed as well, right?
Slightly.
Sounds.
Is, is the building height the same?
Current envelope.
Actually, the building is actually lower.
Building's lower.
Because the center, the, the center pitch on the, the original design was almost, it was 35 feet to the midpoint. So if you take it to the ridge, it was almost 42 feet to the ridge. And we're at 26, 27 feet maximum on this now, so we're, we're much lower.
But those are substantial changes.
Increase your usable space inside the building.
Exactly.
I'm sorry.
You've increased the usable space inside the building.
No, all we've done is removed the columns in the building. The usable space stays the same. We're not, we're not.
Height wise, dimensionally?
Dimensionally, yes. I mean, there we were, there we were, we had, I believe it was 14 foot ceilings and now we're up to just 16 to 18 foot, depending upon where you are under the beam.
I think, but most importantly, we have to look at what the uses.
Right.
To make sure it meets zoning.
So when your site plan was originally approved, was it for partial lease and partial your own use? And is that, that's what you said, right?
So allow me to give a little history, history on that.
Sure.
In, in the, in, in the appearance document, the, the schedule for tonight, it says that the site plan was originally approved in 2009. That's incorrect. That particular site plan, well, first of all, in 2009, we didn't own the lot or the existing 8 Nancy Court that we, that we occupy. We purchased the lot and the building that we are occupying in 2010. And that site plan was in the works, but it had not been completed. We, part of the reason that we bought the lot with the partially completed site plan was so that, one, we could operate our manufacturing facility in number eight and give us, excuse me, space to grow into for number six, should we be able to build that particular building. It's the very same lot. It's not a separate lot, it's just the same lot as number eight. It's got, you have number eight, you've got the parking lot, and then you have this empty space, which is where we proposed to build this. So when we bought, when we bought the property, the site plan was not approved and we worked until 2013 in order to obtain, to complete the site plan and have it available for building a building when the time, time came. So in 2013 is, is the official date when the site plan was signed, stamped, et cetera, by, by East Fishkill.
That might have been waiting for Board of Health, for instance. Might have had a resolution in '09.
There was, there were numerous things, because the, the original beginning of the site, the site plan was originally, you know, started by the person that we purchased property, property from. And, sorry, we kind of know what happened in 2008, 2010 in terms of the real estate situation. And this is actually why the building came to be available for purchase. It was mostly empty. There was an animal hospital leased to it and no one would lease the space because of the real estate situation that was occurring at about that time. So we bought the building for the purpose of fitting it out for the manufacturing space that we now occupy. That's how we came to own the property, complete the site plan, which was signed off in 2013. It's a matter of record. I'm just making sure that everybody understands that, yes, you know, some people might have been, might be past their teenage years, graduated when this project started. It certainly has taken some time. But it's important to, to know when the starting point started.
But it's two different dates, there's when there's a resolution approving it and then when your site plan gets signed. And you, and there's other conditions that have to be met.
So. Yes.
Board, according to this, approved it in '09 and it took four years to meet all your conditions. So as far as the board's concerned, '09 is the start date. So that's why you had to get the extension starting since '09, yeah.
I, I took the date to, to be the time that, you know, it was signed off on. I, I, we didn't even own the property in 2009, so I have no history about that.
But I guess the real issue here right now is that this building has completely changed. Both height and the perimeter structure has changed. So to me, this is definitely going to need some type of amended site approval or a new application.
Well, and the zoning code has changed.
I think it's more the zoning for me. I could, I could accept the building because you're within the original envelope, but the zoning being changed, I think we need to just make sure the current use, proposed use matches the permitted zones.
The original approval for two buildings on one lot?
I, I believe, I can't, I just don't remember. I think it was originally two buildings on one lot, because I, and I think there was shared parking, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that's right.
So that all has to be looked at, because we don't even, originally, there was no use proposed. It was just like a, or it was just a general use proposed. There was no specific use proposed in the building. And I think, you know, we've been waiting to understand what's actually going in the building, because that relates to parking and everything else that's happening there.
So this is a separate address or the same address?
I think it's a, it's a different number.
It's considered 6 Nancy as opposed to 8 Nancy, but it's the same lot.
It's on the same lot, though.
Yes.
Okay.
That's funny, because I, I do remember the shared parking too, which would tell me it was different law, that's so it just.
Yeah.
I don't know why we wouldn't call it shared parking if it was one lot.
The whole.
The whole site.
Six, yeah. The whole 6 Nancy, business park is shared parking.
Gotcha, okay. So maybe it was another adjacent lot?
Yes.
Okay.
There's, there's several.
Does the code allow for two buildings on one lot in this currently, as it, as the code stands?
I, I don't remember the exact history from prior to this gentleman owning the building, but I believe they were always supposed to be two buildings, constructed at like the same time and one of them just didn't get constructed. So it was like two buildings that were approved and they didn't construct one. And then I think they modified it somehow, I think is how it happened, but I have to go back and look.
Now, have you looked at the current zoning to see if you meet the requirements of it?
No. You know, I, I'm not an expert in that. It was like man, it's, when we occupied it, bought it, it was light manufacturing, which is exactly what we do. And, I mean, I, I'll have to plead ignorance that, you know, we, we assumed that on the same lot, for the same purpose, that would be, wouldn't change any, but, but we will definitely look into it.
And this wouldn't be grandfathered in, Michael, if they had started the process back then?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry. So would they, would they be grandfathered in, being that they started the process prior to the zoning change?
There might be. It's, it's unclear.
So in this building, you want to do manufacturing? Do you have currently a manufacturing on in the other building?
Yes, we do manufacturing number eight. Yes.
So it might be like just an expansion of a pre-existing?
Right, I mean, I think it would be, right, I think there's an argument for that, this does seem like an amended site plan to me, that's my initial take.
And what do you manufacture?
Well, electronic manufacturing, we build printed circuit boards for aerospace, for just about anybody who needs electronics building built, we're not a, we don't have our own products, we're what's called a contract manufacturing, so if you need, if you have a product and you want to have it built, you come to us.
Okay. And if you were to build this building, and you mentioned something about possible use of part of it, and then rent part of it, do you have any idea of, you know, how much you would use?
No, you know, ideally, we'd like to occupy the whole thing and grow into it, absolutely, but, you know, for financial reasons, you might want to do something else for a period of time.
But you feel like initially, would you use 50% of it, 70% of it, 80% of it?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
And would the tenant be another like manufacturing kind of use?
Likely?
Well, I can't, I have no idea.
Okay.
I could tell you what people around, where our work would like to see there, they'd like to see a fried chicken store, but, because the food choices in that neighborhood need a little bit of variety.
A fried chicken store would be a significant difference from what we have approved, so.
I'm sure.
Although they are B3 now.
There you go. How many employees at your current site?
15.
15?
Yes.
Did you say 15 or 15?
15.
15, okay.
So it sounds like what we need to ask the applicant to do is to come visit with?
Yeah, because I don't, I mean, I'm looking at the attorney, I'm thinking through this at the same time, we're not really extending the existing approval anymore, right?
Right. It seems, it doesn't seem like we are to me, it seems like an amended plan, but, you know, I think at this point, really, what the board needs is the applicant to go speak with staff about, further details about their plan, and have us take a deep dive into the code.
Okay, right.
Do you want to do a 60-day extension to allow for that to occur, because they, their approval expired on June 7? They requested their extension before that, but.
That would be, and that would be fine, if you want to do a 60-day extension, that's it.
And then we also want to refer them to the ARC, although they've already been to the ARC, but I think we should formalize that.
Yeah, I think we need to understand first, that would be done as part of the amended site plan process.
And how did it happen?
Okay, got it.
We didn't get anything from the ARC to say they saw it, or?
I didn't get anything.
Okay, so Lori, would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to grant a 60-day temporary extension to Donovan 5 BMAC LLC site plan, and in that 60 days, our expectation is that you'll meet with our professionals and determine what your next steps would be to get either an additional extension or a revision to your site plan in process.
Okay, and just for my own clarification, the professionals that we should see are?
In our planning office, our town planner.
Yeah, Michelle.
Okay.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So we look forward to seeing you again after you've had a chance to work through all the details with the planning office, and it's an attractive building, so we do look forward to seeing it again.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is Forestier subdivision. And so, I thought the lady that was getting up was going to be the applicant, so is there anyone here for Forestier subdivision? All right, well then, pardon me?
This is our intern Danielle.
All right, Danielle.
Sorry.
That's right, good to see you. So we will defer anything on that, is there any?
I don't, I mean, I think on this particular one, I don't even know if the applicant necessarily has to be here, I don't know why they're not, but they had to revise, we had approved the subdivision, and they, in the subdivision plat that they provided us, they did not include an easement, an access easement, that was along the property, the boundary of the property, so that was picked up.
For the benefit of whom?
For the property behind it.
Oh.
Access easement, we're in through it, it didn't come up until they submitted an actual plot plan to build the house.
Because it came up on the survey.
And on that plot plan, an easement showed up, which wasn't part of the original subdivision.
So they modified, they had to modify the subdivision plat to show that easement, and that's what this is doing, and so there's a resolution, can we just?
Will you just do the resolution?
Be, just do the resolution.
Yeah, okay, fairly simple matter, okay. Then we will. Name of subdivision plat, Forestier. Name of applicant, Chris Forestier. Location, 8 Country Lane. Resolution offered by Planning Board member John Eichman, whereas the applicant applied for a three-lot subdivision of a 4.34 acre lot in the R1 zone, and whereas the proposed three lots were in conformance with the R1 zoning district, and whereas the planning board opened the public hearing on May 18th, 2021, I'm sorry, did we open a public?
2021.
2021, okay. And closed the public hearing on June 8th, 2021, and whereas the planning board adopted a negative declaration for the unlisted action on June 8th, 2021, whereas the planning board issued final subdivision approval on June 8th, 2021, for the above project as represented on a map entitled Forestier Subdivision Prepared by M. Gillespie and Associates Consulting Engineers dated March 31st, 2021, and last revised February 26th, 2021, and whereas the applicant is requesting to amend Lot 3 on the approved subdivision plat for the purpose of accurately describing the access easement which runs over the lot and was not described in the original filed map creating the lot, and now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues amended subdivision approval for the above project as represented on a survey entitled Amendment of Lot Number 3 Forestier Subdivision Prepared by Robert V. Oswald Land Surveying dated May 7th, 2024. And number one, the final plat will contain the written approval of DCHD before it's signed by the chairperson. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Don LaPepe.
Aye.
John Greenan.
Aye.
John Eichman, I'm an aye. Carries. Is there any other business to be brought before the board for this evening, and if not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.